Howdy, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October the 11th, 2022, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the conclusion of the executive session, I will come back out and announce work session, at which time the public will be invited to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 6:40 PM. We are at the end of executive session. We are moving into work session, and the public is invited to join us in the conference room. Thank you very much. Okay, the time is 6:43. We do have a quorum present, even though I didn't see them in the back corner over there. We're moving into work session. We have a discussion regarding agenda items. Is there anything on the agenda tonight that we have any questions on or questions about?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, John?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things I want to get clarification on.
Okay.
On Agenda Item E and F.
Okay, E is Chief Richardson? Is Chief Richardson here? Chief?
Yes.
Oh, Chief.
There he is.
Chief!
We have a question on Agenda Item E.
Item E, we are here for the questions.
That is the approval of two agreements for disaster debris monitoring and consulting services. Captain, remember, John had a question.
Chief, I just have a question on these two. It looks like they're almost the same thing, except one has two different companies, but also one's an agreement and one's a contract. What?
Yeah, so I'm gonna introduce Jennifer Best. She's our emergency management coordinator, and so she will help us understand. So there's two different items. One is for the removal, and the other one is going to be for the... There's two different companies. One is monitoring, and one's going to be the removal company.
Okay, it says like debris monitoring and consulting, and then it all has debris, removal, and reduction disposal. So they're both separate in the sense that they're gonna monitor and then remove? Is that what it was?
That's right. So what the monitoring, in the event of a disaster, what the, like in Florida, the monitoring company will monitor the debris that's coming out, measuring it for the fuma gas. Then there's a separate company that handles the actual removal of the material. They're separate, independent of each other.
And one's an agreement and one's a contract because of that, or you just monitoring and then... I just wanted to... You answer. I was just wondering why there was two similar but distinctions. And then I also have a question on H.
Steve, sure. That is the annual holiday lighting program.
This one, so if I remember correctly, last year, it was, was it under 200,000 that we contracted for, or was that, was it over?
Yes, yes, sir, it was. The reason for the increase this year is we've combined the parks department and the facilities under one contract. So last year, you were seeing strictly the facilities contract.
Okay. Another clarification I want to get is on the, what is this, what is this called? On the premier, I guess the, is it the estimate on the contract?
On the bid?
Yes. If you go to the, if you go to page, I mean, on the memo, it says, it talks about 240,608 dollars for this contract. But if you go to the, I guess, the contract on page, on page 17, it has budget revision. And then it says, due to the scope, at a scope of proposal, the estimated budget amount that is noted on page 32, section 2.5.5, is revised at 250,000 dollars. I don't see what that page, the page is missing, and I don't know what that proposal or revised scope of proposal was to make that budget.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the full, I just printed it as part of our devoid printing out everything. I just have the, the actual, their bid and the memo and what it covers.
Okay. Okay. So we don't know what that change was. And this is just the proposal, right? It wasn't the budget proposal, but out of the 250,000, I'm just trying to, you know, make, make sure I'm getting this right, that only 240,000 is being awarded? Is that correct, or am I reading it wrong?
No, the, the actual award, the contract is, oh yeah, 240,608 dollars.
Out of the 250,000 that we budgeted?
Oh, okay, okay, I understand. I'm sorry, that was, I misunderstood what you're saying. Yeah, what I, the 250,000 is what I budgeted for as a, as an estimate of what it would, you know, cost. And then when we went out to bids, the actual bids, the actual bid came in, came in lower than the budgeted amount.
But whatever that scope of proposal that was added, we're just not sure what that change was that made it into 250, we increased the budget. Is that what?
We'll get to that page.
Okay. Okay, but that's why, whatever that proposal was, right? I'm just trying to make sure that's... Okay. Those are the clarifications I want to get. That's a lot of them.
Any other questions on Agenda? Thank you, Steve. Item B is regarding the addition of a deceleration lane on State Highway 121. Mr. Collins, I actually drove this the other day, and I didn't understand it until I drove it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Fairly short presentation tonight. It is a discussion regarding deceleration lane. This is eastbound State Highway 121, Frontage Road at East Lake Drive. It's brought to our attention, there was a crash at this location about, I mean, about six, eight weeks ago. So the request, hey, can, you know, can we look at getting a decel lane added to this location? So the area of concern, I've got the large aerial up there on the left, that arrow is East Lake Drive. You'll notice that there's an exit ramp just to the west of this location. If you drive it, that exit ramp actually has two lanes. So if you're on the right side of the ramp, it feeds the middle lane of the, of the service road. And so you have plenty of room to weave over and use that, that entry into the neighborhood, and a lot of people do. We pulled crash records for the last four years. There've been about five crashes in the area, but only two that are related to someone slowing down to turn right. So, you know, I would say there's two crashes in the last four years that would be preventable by adding a decel lane. However, I would say with the, the speed of the Frontage Road, and the fact that it is a right turn movement, it would be a safety measure that we would recommend. Top right, I have the aerial, or this is the street view from the intersection, looking back to, back to the west. So that's what your view would be if you were trying to exit this, at this location. And then on the bottom right, just kind of a zoomed-in view of the area. So this is the neighborhood, and I really want to just show this to highlight the fact that there is good connectivity between the neighborhoods in this area. And I've showed, just highlighted in yellow, all the connectivity. In the, in the middle, at the top, that is the, the main entrance into West Haven, as West Haven Road. There is a decel lane that serves that intersection already. So if someone was particularly concerned and needed to access or felt like they wanted access into the neighborhood with a decel lane, one exists, and you can get to it. So if you were heading, say, north or eastbound on State Highway 121, you would access that, this by exiting Freeport, going through the signal, coming around the Frontage Road, and turning, turning right here at West Haven. So that, that decel lane does exist today, and what we are suggesting or recommending, and for council's consideration, is moving forward with a second deceleration lane here at East Lake Drive.
Go back. I'm sorry, I can't see. Where is East Lake? It's coming up.
East Lake is where the red arrow is.
So...
So we have...
Aren't the accidents occurring because people are coming off the, the 121 and crossing over?
No, the accidents are happening because, well, they're happening for a number of reasons in this area. The accidents at this intersection are happening because people are slowing down to turn right, and then they, and they're rear-ended by vehicles that don't slow down.
And it's not coming off of the?
Well, it, it may be, but they are in that right lane to decelerate and make the right-hand turn. We're not seeing a lot of, like, weaving, side-squat type crashes in this stretch.
Nothing like we saw at the NTTA the other day.
Nothing like that.
Good, good. So I, I, when I was reading this, I thought we were talking about accidents occurring because cars were exiting off of 121 and, and cutting over immediately and, to make that turn and decelerating as a result of coming off of 121. But that's not really what we're looking at here.
I won't say that those vehicles are not coming off the ramp, but they are decelerating to very slow speed to make that right turn. And so if you're not paying attention, you will, and that's the, that's the crashes that I'm talking about, that would be prevented or could be prevented by adding the deceleration.
Could we put devices in the, in the, the, I know, I know that you've got the solid line that you're not supposed to cross over. Is there any device that we could put in that would prevent traffic from crossing over in an inadvertent manner?
You'd have to really extend them. It's a pretty good distance.
Is it?
It is. Yeah, I drove it today, and it's, I mean, it takes you probably, I don't know, around 10 seconds or so to get from the end of that ramp to the right-hand turn. I mean, it's, it's plenty of distance and time to make your way over and slow down. So I mean, it, I don't know with this, this neighborhood has been there a long time, and...
Okay, I'll, I'll defer to you then, Don.
So there's five entries into this neighborhood. What's special about just this intersection? How, are we just not have problems at these other three locations, or why would we not need all of them, I guess?
Well, what's special is, I would say that if you look at it, we have the decel lane right at Windhaven coming in, right, the main entry.
Right.
So let's just say that, that easily serves the, kind of the west half of, of the subdivision. You cannot get there if you're coming off of this ramp, the main ramp for Capella, right, north Capella, is this ramp. It is the Denton Tap ramp. It's, it's heavily used, and people will make that maneuver. And so it's, you know, this entry is, you can't get to the, well, maybe you can to Wing Gate, but it would be a, that would be the right-hand turn off of the ramp. So most people are using that to, for the east half of the subdivision, I think.
So Wing Gate, we're not really having trouble, is what, I mean, the, the only issue is really happening over here is the East Gate, okay.
Correct, which is where the red arrow is, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So do we have a decel lane at the green arrow?
Yes.
Okay. Did you?
Yeah, thank you. I, I got a number of emails and phone calls from the subdivision night over at some other M T U. So let me go over here and show you. So this is the exit coming up 121 Denton Tap, and people are making right turn to Wing Gate, and that's also an issue. And there's an accident happened, I don't know, last year or so, and that stops fine. And you are suggesting we put a decel line here, right here?
Correct.
Okay. That move.
And I do think for Wing Gate, because it is so close to the ramp, we, we could work with Tech Dot or ask Tech Dot to put something in to prevent that maneuver. That maneuver should not be happening.
It's probably illegal because it's gonna have a solid line anyway, and you're not supposed to cross over the solid line. What can we do?
Well, it's very short, though. So the, the striping in this area is, is a little bit of a no-man's land. NTTA, you can kind of see, the SRT stops right here, and then it becomes 121. So the maintenance is a switch right in this area. If you drive it, the striping is really bad. We're gonna reach out to Tech Dot, NTTA, see what we can get done, just to, to improve the striping in this area, first of all. There are instances, I don't know if Tech Dot would do it, because it would be a maintenance issue for them, where you put in the little type-one barricades with the type-one called matchsticks down, instead of the double, double white stripe. Again, you know, we're in a position where we can request things. This is Tech Dot and NTTA. In this area, Tech Dot would permit the, the decel lane.
Okay.
So we can request improvements in the area, how quickly they react, or how they react.
Mark?
Any downside to putting in a decel lane, other than just some cost?
Just got a cost. Right, and I've, I've got a summary inside here. It's, it's, so we, because of the speed of the road, we have seen some crashes out here. I think it would make that the most desirable entrance, even if we can't get a barrier put up to prevent people making the Wing Gate maneuver. Estimated cost, about 250,000. You're gonna hear, Tracy, you recommend that we use ARPA funds to fund this, if council gives us direction to move forward. But we do have other sources. We could use Quartercent IMF, we could use Roadway Impact Fees, they are available. We could also, I mean, the other option is, we could request this of Tech Dot, and then they could work to, we've worked with them to try to find some funding that might be out there, or through their, their funding process. That's a three-to-five-year timeframe. If we do it locally, we think we can get it designed and implemented in a year. So, again, just to wrap up, we're requesting feedback, whether to proceed, and, and then which kind of funding option to proceed with.
I'm in favor of option number two.
Yeah. Option one, it's almost like not doing anything. John?
Weren't the residents at one point asking for a second entrance, or?
I remember there was something up on the west side, yeah.
Because they always missed, missed the entrance, and then if they do miss that, they have to go all the way around, come back around.
They may have requested, I mean, but obviously, you look at the map, there's plenty of access to this neighborhood.
You know, that, that was not this subdivision.
I think it's a different one.
I think it was the next one down.
Was it?
Yeah.
I think it was Magnolia.
Was it?
Yeah.
I thought it was.
Because there is only one, there is only one entrance to Magnolia.
So I'm gonna go with, what Mayor was saying, I honestly thought it was the people that are actually exiting from the tollway, I mean, not the 121, and actually trying to make a cut to that Wing Gate is the one that's causing the accident, because there's, I've seen that happen a lot. And there is a very short, there, there's a double white line, but there's a very short distance where you can actually try to make that cut.
This request specifically came after a crash at, at East Lake. And it said photos, and that's when we started looking at it. And we think it's, we think it's a, it's a worthwhile improvement to add the decel lane.
So are we okay putting in the decel lane?
Yes.
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 Are we okay asking him to also look in to putting traffic control devices, what you call it, matchsticks?
Yeah, they're the little.
On, to prevent turns on the Wing Gate?
Those things, in one month, they'll be plowed over.
Well, and, and that's why Tech Dot, I think, will push back on that idea, and it may want to look at other options. What we can make, what we can ask them is, what can we do here to help with this problem? A, we're starting with restriping it, so that is double wide, extend that double wide, so that it can be enforced potentially. So we, we will pursue that for sure.
And, and no, we can't put tire shitters up there.
Like six-inch bombs right there, all in a row, that'll stop it.
Used to use those.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else for Kim?
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Talking about basketball.
Thank you very much. All right. Item C is American Rescue Plan Funding Update. Ms. Hurley? No.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We are gonna do a tag team presentation for this item. What we will be presenting tonight is an update on our currently prioritized and funded ARP projects and programs. Mindy will provide an update on the business assistance grants, and then I will have a rec, I will come back up here and have a recommendation for your consideration regarding reallocation of some of the funds that we have remaining for East Lake, which Ken just discussed with you, as well as the Moore Road Boardwalk. So at this point, let me hop into just a summary of where we are. So this is the current list of priority projects that the council has directed us to go ahead and use ARP funding for. So these are already in the books. We, we've got, we've got these in our work plan now. You can see that a number of them are underway already. There are a couple of them that are completed. So for example, we have the utility billing credit for our over 65 seniors, that is completed and done. We have completed the reconfiguration of the court clerk areas. The items that we're gonna focus on today are really around the business assistance grants, so we have 2.7 allocated there. And then we will be, I'll have the recommendation for you on reallocating some of those dollars for Moore Road Boardwalk, as well as East Lake Deceleration Lane. Do you all have any questions about any of these projects that you have already directed us as a priority?
Brianna?
No, but Tracy, next time, I don't know, I, I think it would be helpful for me just to have some dates out there of like, when, if they're like, if you say they're underway, or they're close to being done, like, expected ETA, maybe?
Oh, sure, okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so at this point, I will have Mindy come up and walk you through the update on the business assistance grants. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Tracy said, I'm gonna give you a quick update on the two business support programs that you all approved and funded. Both are grant programs that are funded through the American Rescue Plan Act funds provided to the city. Those are the Business Rent and Mortgage Assistance Grant Program and the Revenue Recovery Assistance Grant Program. In total, City Council dedicated 2.7 million, 2.75 million dollars to these programs to aid businesses in Capella. So now I'm gonna give you a quick summary and update on each program. The first one is the Business Rent Mortgage Assistance Grant. As you all know, several of our businesses are still struggling to recover to full operation levels after COVID-19. And so as such, the Business Rent Mortgage Assistance Program was designed to assist small businesses that suffered financial loss due to COVID-19 with their rent or mortgage. City Council initially dedicated 650,000 dollars from ARPA funds to this program. The program offers a one-time grant of $10,000 to qualifying businesses that apply. Letters were mailed to all the businesses in early May. Applications opened on May 31st, and again, the response was overwhelming, and all funds were dedicated to qualifying businesses by June 1st. Because the response was so robust, City Council dedicated an additional 1.8 million dollars to this grant program. Letters were mailed once again to all Capella businesses, and the application reopened on July 13th. To date, an additional 560,000 dollars has been awarded in the Business Rent Mortgage Grants. So it'll, so a total of 2.45 million dollars was dedicated to the grant program. Oh, I'm sorry, real quick, how we did notify, we did mail two letters to every business in Capella, again, one in early May and then another in mid-June. We used the website, we used social media, it went out in our newsletter, and then also the Chamber of Commerce helped promote it. And so again, a total of 2.45 million dollars was dedicated to this grant program. A total of 1.21 million has been awarded to businesses, which means we have 1.24 million dollars in ARPA funds remaining for this program. This is the, kind of to show you how we've received the applications. Again, the letters were mailed in May and June, and then the applications opened on May 31st and July 13th. So you can see, we had a huge response in May, and then June, and then that completed the funds, and then we had a huge response again in July. And each month since then, we have, our applications have dwindled. The next program is the Revenue Recovery Assistance Grant Program. It's, it's designed to assist businesses that are impacted by the reconstruction of South Beltline Road. Businesses that rely on drive-by and dropping traffic, particularly, particularly retail, restaurant, personal services are typically negatively impacted by construction. So City Council dedicated 300,000 dollars from ARPA funds to this program. The grant is a one-time grant awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. The grant award is 5,000 dollars per business. And City Council did identify approximately 70 businesses that were eligible to receive the grant that fell on South Dent Tap or South Beltline Road, that are located between Sandy Lake Road and 635. Letters were mailed to all eligible businesses, and then priority was given to the businesses that are located directly in the construction zone, because the application opened to them two weeks earlier than it did to the rest of the businesses. Applications have been open for approximately seven weeks now. To date, we've received 27 applications, and a total of 135,000 dollars has been awarded. Therefore, we have 165,000 dollars of ARPA funds dedicated to this grant program that are still, that still remain. And again, just so you see, letters were mailed on July 26th to all of the eligible businesses, and then the applications opened on August 25th for the businesses south of Southwestern, and then they opened to the remaining businesses on September 8th. So you can kind of see how our applications have been received over that time. So, and in all total, 2.75 million dollars was dedicated to the business support programs. You can see the breakdown how, what was dedicated to the rent mortgage and what was dedicated to the revenue recovery. We have now awarded 1,345,000 dollars, which means 1,405,000 remain for, for our business grant programs. I, I'll open it up to questions. Do you all have any questions? And then I'll turn it back to Tracy.
John?
So is the application closed as of?
It's not.
Still open?
It's, it's still open right now.
When, do we have any expectation data as to when we're gonna close then?
So we left, the way we stated is that the application would remain open until all funds were, or reallocated by council. So we're just giving you an update tonight of where we stand on them.
Mark?
You know, we were concerned that we were not gonna have adequate funds for the Revenue Recovery Grant, and we excluded a list of businesses. I think at this point, since we've still got an outstanding balance of 135, we give them the opportunity to apply. That's just my opinion.
100% agree.
Yeah. You're talking about those that were excluded out?
Yeah, because we, we just didn't know, but we didn't want the people that we knew that were sure.
Let's be honest, we thought we were gonna be overwhelmed with applicants.
Yeah.
And so it hasn't caught, caught that way, so I, I, even though I'm not voting, I agree.
So those are applicants, the gym membership and?
So fitness and educational category would be added, is that what I'm hearing?
Is that what you mean?
Would like to add?
The membership rates, right?
Yeah, and you know, I guess you probably, you guys probably received an email from one of the owners, and they did bring up a valid point that people, you know, wouldn't necessarily come up to, you know, from South Beltline up to Capella, just because it was a hassle. It was easier for them to go down to Irving to, to do their membership. So you know, in hindsight, I mean, I think we made the right decision, but since we have the opportunity now to open it up to those other businesses like Gym. But since we have the opportunity now to open it up to those, um, other, um, businesses like, uh, gym, um, you know, gyms and fitness centers.
Education. In education.
Yeah, in education as well.
I mean, they were okay. Okay, everybody good with that?
Yes.
We're good.
Okay.
So there had also been discussion at some point because, you know, we cut it off at, um, Sandy Lake and there had been talk, once upon a time, at the very beginning of, do we need to go north of that even for some of the same reasons? And so now that we have, we continue to have funds, is that something we should, I should consider?
Rent Recovery Plan.
Yes, for this, for the, for the Beltline Construction Project, 'cause the whole, the whole stretch could be suspect, so.
Because we are asking them to divert before you even necessarily get to, um, one, one twenty-one, is that correct?
No.
We're, we're giving them direction via Twitter to, to use alternate routes?
Well, for, under certain conditions, we, we tell them or ask them to consider either MacArthur or Freeport. That's really the core oil thing.
Yeah, that initial Sandy Lake delineation was due to the fact that we had the message board placed there.
Before you get to Sandy.
I do think it's a fair point that there, I mean, just in general, for this eighteen months, people are taking alternative routes and coming through Capel in a different direction, so. I think it's, I don't, uh, let me back up. I don't know if you even know how many businesses were even talking about that would qualify north of that. You probably don't.
I had that in a previous presentation. I wasn't thinking, so no, I apologize. I don't remember off the top of my head how many were in that category.
Well, just based on the result, I'm just curious if that is something we should consider as we deplete this fund. And the other caveat I was gonna put, do we need to go ahead and put some kind of sunset provision, whether it be the end of the year, that we need to, you know, decide that we need to wrap up applications and then decide if we need to reallocate within some reasonable period of time?
John, so I'm, I'm with Don about having a, I guess, closure on the Rent Mortgage Assistant. As far as the Rent Revenue Grant, I'm not really for going above the, um, the Sandy Lake. I, I don't know if they actually had that, that impact like the way they did south of, um, south of, um, Sandy Lake, so. But at the same time, I think that whatever that we have, um, I would like to suggest that we, there might be some situations that come up. I would like to see if we're gonna reserve the rest of it, um, for additional possible use in the future.
I guess my only, my only response is you're, you're right, it may not be quite the same impact. I just, I don't know if we know for sure what the impact is. Uh, because it is a, it is a major thoroughfare through our retail sort of corridor, more so than the other two, than, than the, the other routes. And so I, I just hate to, if the funds are there available, I hate to exclude, I hate to s- make the pot smaller, the pool smaller. You know, if the funds are there, so.
It's only because the main thing was businesses that are around the construction that are being impacted. And, and, and those, I, I don't believe it goes beyond north of Sandy Lake. Even really honestly below certain extents of Sandy Lake, but I, I just, I think that we're getting to a point where we're giving it away 'cause we have the fund. But again, I think that we can use those funds for other things, um, that could be very useful.
Cliff? Yeah, I, we've, uh, on this particular thing, in our previous discussions, when poor Don was by himself, uh, on the, on the discussion, we made all sorts of assumptions and we made assumptions tonight. I don't think we really know. I'm s- you know, I, I, I wanna give the business person the benefit of the doubt on this. And, uh, I, if it, if we extend further north, it doesn't bother me, but I mean, but we need to see if we can't get those funds working, uh, in our community with these, uh, uh, small business people. Because we can't, we don't know, you know, what their problems are. We're just making some, uh, some, you know, some assumptions about what their problems are. But, so I think, you know, we're not, I, I know we're a real important group, but we're not that important. And we tell how to run their businesses, so I'm, I'm for giving them, uh, the one sixty-five.
John? But if I could follow up on that, we provided Rent Mortgage Assistance Grant availability, but it's not, that hasn't even been exhausted.
I guess that's, I guess I feel like that supports my position even more is making sure, we are making sure that the money is getting.
But what I'm saying is.
Used, I suspect it will still not all get used, is my suspicion.
Double the amount than what we were, uh, providing for the Revenue Recovery Grant. And I, I would have suspected that people that needed that would have jumped, 'cause that was, there was no limitation on that, right?
No, there was not.
Right.
It was for any small business in town.
So, and we've pretty much come down to zero application at this point?
That's right.
Yeah.
So I think here, correct me if I, what I think I heard was extend the Business Assistance Grant on up, how far north?
Well, like, I don't know, one twenty-one?
To one twenty-one? I thought that's what I heard you say.
That, that, that's what I would recommend.
But also put a cap of, of December thirty-first for the program, a sunset?
Is that a good, I mean, uh, that's what probably what I would came up with, just, I think that's some sufficient time to get applications in for anybody who's going to apply.
I looked at Mindy.
That's a question for Mindy, is there enough time to get?
Bad time?
For businesses to get their applications? The, the application's very simple. So we will have to send letters now to the remaining businesses. But the application will be open immediately to them.
Well, and, and her data is showing that within three weeks, you know, the, the application process, by the time she sends a letter, opens the application process, they get all of their responses within three weeks, so it's not like it drags on forever.
So are you okay with the December thirty-first sunset?
Sure.
Do we, do you have any, I'm not trying to push you on the spot on this at all, but do you have any inkling about the number of businesses we're talking about that would be north? I know you said you don't have the data, but I'm just, I don't wanna get us in a bind where somehow.
When we add back in the fitness and education businesses, that, that's gonna increase the, the number south of Sandy Lake.
Right.
And I, I think it was around twelve that would add that up. And then north of there, I, I really don't remember. The number twenty-four sticking out in my head, but I can't remember if that's between Southwestern and Sandy Lake or if that was between Sandy Lake and one twenty-one. Um, so I'll have to go back and look to see.
Yeah, 'cause that was my question, 'cause then if everybody were to come forward, would we have enough?
And I'm not, really not trying to over-engineer this, but because we got one point two million on the other bucket, I'm just doing, I mean, I wanna make sure there's enough funds if by chance twenty-four or thirty-six businesses, yes, even though I suspect that's not what will happen. Uh, I suspect we'll get a similar rate than we did the first time. But do we need to allocate extra dollars from one bucket to the other bucket? I mean, it's all, it's all economic development and it's all the same two buckets. So I don't know what the number is, 'cause we don't know exactly how many businesses there are, but another couple of hundred thousand would be enough. That would give us three sixty-five in that bucket, still leaving a million in the other bucket, right? So, that's my thought. My thought is to shift a couple of hundred thousand dollars over there just so there's enough in case. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, and you know, I'm, I'm just looking on a map and, you know, if, if our strategy has been to tell people to go to Freeport or go down MacArthur, I mean, you're, you're definitely making that decision before you.
Way before, yeah.
Yeah, before you cross over, uh, one twenty-one, under one twenty-one, or, uh, the tollway, excuse me.
Okay, so do.
Yes.
Bijou, how are you, you're being quiet over there?
Um, so this is the continuing discussion about extending the grant all the way to one twenty-one.
Till December thirty-first.
Why are we stopping at one twenty-one? There are businesses beyond.
Can we do the city limits?
Yeah, city limits.
Oh, yes, because it's, and there's another block or something.
That area because they're making that decision and here or, or there to go across.
Just go to the city limits up there.
You know, city limits, like you can, like you said.
I think that.
Then they just avoid it completely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, and also extending or reallocating about two hundred thousand dollars?
I'm just picking two hundred, that gives us three sixty-five in that bucket.
Because we have enough money in the bucket, right? It's unused.
That's correct.
Today, now, I, I was about to be applying the ointment and make a an option for y'all to consider, knowing that we got one point four that is kinda unallocated at this point. Uh, but based on what I'm hearing right now, it sounds like we wanna just give this one more go until kinda the, the end of the year, first of the year.
Sunset it.
And then we can have a revisitation on if there is a reprioritization to occur. Now, am I, I know we just had the presentation from Kent on East Lake. Is council amenable to funding East Lake Decelerate Lane out of ARPA money?
You've got about, you've got about a million dollars in the rent rental mortgage assistance grant that's remaining even after we reallocate the two hundred thousand.
Right.
Kent is asking two fifty, right?
So you've got, there's plenty of funds there to do that.
Okay, so I.
We can find quarter million dollars somewhere.
It's right there.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it, yes.
Okay, Cliff, you okay?
Yeah.
John?
No.
No?
Not okay.
Okay. All right.
I'm not okay. I mean, I, I, I think.
With the decelerate?
Instead of using that two hundred dollars, shifting over to Rent Revenue, Revenue Grant, I think I'd rather use that money for that decel- decelerate lane. And then the other rest of the money, uh, it looks like we're just trying to get rid of the money. I mean, there's other things I believe there's gonna be foreseeable future that we could use this money for, that's gonna be very valuable. I, it just seems like we're just trying to get rid of the money. You know, we talked about this, right? Rent Mortgage Assistance, ten thousand dollar grant. It's been open to everyone. Application's been down to zero. Why are we trying to put additional money into the Rent Revenue Recovered Grant when that wasn't even exhausted?
Because we're extending it out to a whole new class of companies, businesses.
I suspect we're gonna get a million dollars back to reallocate is my guess. I mean, just, that's just a wild guess.
And are both grant programs sunsetting on December thirty-first? Is that, or are y'all just sunsetting Revenue Recovery?
I guess I'd say both of them. I mean, if, it looks like the applications have dropped away a lot, right? So give another two and a half months.
I'd give them, how about to the end of January?
So don't you think in future programs or projects may come, we need to save some money?
I think there's gonna be some foreseeable future, we could be needing that money.
So this was, so I mentioned earlier, so with the idea of are there other projects that ARP dollars could fund? Um, this was a recommendation that we were going to, um, throw out for council consideration. So essentially what this would do, if we move forward as it's outlined on this slide, we would, um, have reserved four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to continue the Business Assistance Grants. We would, um, fund the Deceleration Lane at East Lake. And then we have received the bids for the Moore Road Boardwalk. Um, that is a project that the Parks Team will be, um, briefing the council on at the next, uh, work session. Um, but as it stands right now, the worst-case scenario looks like we're gonna need another seven hundred thousand dollars based on the bids that we got. We're kinda, a lot of that is driven from, um, the inflationary environment that we're in and some of that is fueled from the, um, the peers that we're gonna need for that project. So under this scenario, we would, um, we would take the, um, we would have remaining in Business Assistance Grants just shy of half a million dollars. And then we would be able then to refund those other two items out of ARP money. And so I throw that out there for your consideration, knowing that it does sound like we do wanna continue on with, um, providing an opportunity for the businesses to make an, an additional application now that we've kinda opened it up. And then give us an opportunity to address these other two areas as well.
Tracy, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
So the projected cost on Moore Road, um, Park Four went from one point two to almost two million?
So seven million, set seven hundred thousand is what we're working right now to whittle down. So that is worst-case scenario. We're, we're kinda, we are looking at that right now.
And if we don't have that fund from the ARP, we're not given that, where, where's that gonna come?
CRDC.
So we're gonna put a two million dollar boardwalk?
That is a, yes. So this is a high priority project from a community standpoint. Um, and just where we are right now on the bids we received, um, there's not a lot there that I think we're going to be able to pull. But this is really worst-case scenario on what that would look like.
I'm shocked right now. I was shocked at two, one point two million dollar boardwalk and now I'm even more shocked for the two million dollar boardwalk. So I'm, I, I, I don't know what to say.
So where are we gonna get the money from?
I'm sorry, for which one?
One point nine million dollars.
ARP. Our proposal is to fund that through ARP dollars.
Even the boardwalk?
Moore Road, yes. Moore Road Boardwalk, we are proposing it. You currently have allocated one point two six million dollars in ARP dollars to fund that project. What we're proposing for consideration tonight, knowing what we are working towards as it relates to the bid award, it would be a total project cost of one point nine six funded out of ARP dollars. So I told you it was gonna be the flying ointment.
I was just gonna say, actually, the way you've broken it out there, I'm, I'm okay with.
So proposed budget that far right?
Reallocation, because that actually lines up with the numbers I was throwing out too, based on what we've spent and how much was gone to the South Beltline. So I, I actually think this reallocation, uh, is reasonable. 'Cause we get this other stuff funded and we still expand the economic development program here for the next two and a half months or so. So I think, I think that's a good breakdown.
Bijou?
I was gonna say it's seven thirty.
I'm with Don on, on that. I mean, I, you know, I, I think it's pretty clear that citizens of two communities came together and said, this is really where we prefer to have that, that boardwalk. And, you know, the, we know there's more expense associated with that due to the peers to keep that block stabilized. We're not gonna put it up there like it was before, just, you know, concrete right on ground. Um, because it's gonna wash away whenever we have a flood, so, you know, this, this, we're doing it right. And then if it's, if it costs more, um, you know, we've, we've got the ARPA funds and, uh, and CRDC if we need.
You know, we all accepted the reasons for the boardwalk, for the, for what it was.
I didn't.
Beg your pardon?
I didn't. So it's not a we all. I mean, I, I didn't.
I said we, I didn't say all.
You did say we all.
Okay, there was a majority opinion of the council to accept that. And one of the things that you do learn is that, especially in the environment we're in, that, that costs are rising. And that is uncomfortable for everybody, admittedly. Where do we stand on, on this reallocation, Tracy? What are you hearing?
I'm hearing a mixed, um, mixed feedback in terms of how to move forward. So I do hear at least some, some consensus that this proposed, um, pathway forward sounds good. I'm also hearing otherwise.
Everybody speak.
What are you hearing here?
I'm hearing a, I think what I'm hearing is a consensus that we wanna reallocate the two hundred thousand dollars from the business assist- from the rental. from the business assist, from the rental assistance over to the, uh, business assistance and expand that program up to the city limits on one, on Ditten Tap.
And open it up to-
And, yeah. And open it, and open it up to the other businesses that were originally excluded. Thank you for the addition.
And the sunset, or-
And the sunset, so, but I, sorry. I heard end of December and I heard end of January.
Tracy brought, she was whispering in my ear.
Okay, so that's where I wanted it.
And, and she was pointing out that, you know, we are at the end, almost at the end of October, that's two months. And then we've got the holidays coming up, so it'd be probably better to move it out to January.
I think that's fine. I think the, the bigger thing is just having a, I mean, having, having, yeah, having an end. So we know when to move on.
I'm, I'm aligned.
Everybody, or do we have a, I have one down there, one there, one there, a no there, a yes there?
I mean, I'm okay with the business.
Okay.
I'm okay, man, I'm not okay with-
But we're not approving that.
Oh, you're not approving that, okay. Then I'm okay.
Correct, so the action tonight, um, this reallocation is not approving the project. It, you're gonna have that full, full briefing at the next work session. This is, we, the funding option on if that's an option for us to move forward, right? So we've kind of committed to this project. We're gonna fund it by, this is an option that we can fund it by. We also have CRDC, knowing that CRDC is a sales tax funded fund. This was the proposal.
This is showing you that you still have multiple options available to you.
Right, so it's not approving the, the project itself or awarding a bid or moving forward.
Don?
I do, I would like to go ahead and at least see if we can get consensus on the two fifty to give Kent to go ahead to move, I mean, or-
I'm sorry.
So there's a funding source for that, so, I mean, I don't want to hold that up, if we're gonna debate the boardwalk, is my point.
We're not gonna debate, debate the boardwalk tonight, that's not, that's not the discussion tonight.
I know, but if we don't reallocate the funds-
It gets funded either way.
Okay.
CRDC would be our alternative.
That's fine.
I'm with you, the, for the allocation of the two fifty.
To fund it out of the ARC funds as well?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
So consensus on decel out of ARC?
Okay, so.
So what's-
Everything I just said.
So what's left up, up in the air is just more park?
More park, and that'll be a discussion at a later-
At the next session.
So it just stays in the economic development stuff forever?
And we will revisit all of this-
When we, the other stuff sunsets or whenever?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, item D is a discussion regarding electioneering at polling locations. Uh, hang on, is this, I'm talking to Ashley. Thank you, Mindy. So can we do this out on the floor during consent?
Of course, sure.
Because it's tied into that?
Yes.
Okay, so item D is tied into consent agenda, item B. So we will pull that and consider that separately on the floor.
Can you give us like five minutes?
Um, the time is seven thirty-five, we are-
Two minutes.
We are, we are adjourned from work session and will, uh, reestablish a general session in five minutes. Seven forty. Good afternoon, we have recessed from work session and we will be reinitiating city council meeting in about three or four minutes. Thank you.
Do you need anything for me?
Nope. Good afternoon, the time is seven forty-two PM, and we're gonna reconvene into the city council meeting. Uh, item, well, oh, as a reminder, anybody wishing to speak during citizens' parents' tonight or public hearing must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list their residence address. Uh, tonight, we're very fortunate to have, uh, a variety of, uh, special guests tonight with us. Um, for our, tonight, we have Dr. Theodosis Maratoma, who will give our invi- uh, invocation, and then the Capel Fire Department honor guard will post the colors and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand for both the invocation and the posting of the colors.
Almighty God, our everlasting God, on this auspicious occasion, we beseech you to grant us your blessings and mercies. We thank you for creating the entire universe and all humankind and preserving them for your glory. He has the crown of creation, bow her in your presence now, and pray that you will empower us to carry out your will and purpose about us in time and in space. We thank you for the United States of America and the American democracy that we hold on to in the general administration of the country, state, and city. We pray for all the firefighters, police officers, and the emergency personnel who work day and night for the welfare of the people and the universe. Today, as we have gathered together in the city of Capel Texas, we pray for your blessings upon the elected mayor, Wes Mays, and Pro Tem mayor, Bijou Matthew, and all the elected officials and city staff. Guide and lead them in all administrations and all walks of life. God, we acknowledge that you remain as Lord and master of everything. Therefore, we pray that you fill the elected officials and the city staff with your wisdom to hold on to all that is true and noble in order to glorify you and carry out the ministry for and among the people with the spirit of righteousness and justice, grandest unity and the spirit of reconciliation, so that the city will prosper and all will rejoice in the elected officials carrying out their responsibilities. Lord, we pray that you bless everyone present here today. Peace would prevail in the city and your great name will be glorified. We ask this in Jesus' precious name, amen.
Council, for your consideration. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are the greatest at risk from fire, and whereas each year, the fire departments nationwide respond to over three hundred and fifty thousand home fires in which over two thousand six hundred civilians are killed, and whereas working smoke alarms alert you to the danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarm and knows how to respond to those sounds, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the twenty twenty-two fire prevention month theme is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind us of the importance of having a home fire escape plan. Now, therefore, I, Wes Mays, mayor of the Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-two as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Capel to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Month twenty twenty-two and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Capel's Fire and Emergency Services. It witness thereof has set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed this eleventh day of October twenty twenty-two. Council? Council member Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, uh, the proclamation naming the month of October as Fire Prevention Month.
A second by council member Brianna Hinojosa Smith, all in favor?
Long Hinojosa Smith, Carol John Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Chief, would you have something to say there?
Certainly. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the, having us this evening and recognizing, uh, the proclamation for National Fire Prevention Month. You know, um, we, we're excited. This time of the year, we get, have an opportunity for us to showcase our fire education and life safety activities. It originated way back in the late eighteen hundreds with the Great Chicago Fire where over twenty thousand, uh, buildings burned for four days and over five hundred people died as a result. And unfortunately after, well fortunately after that tragic event like that is when National Fire Prevention Week was born. It was an opportunity for everybody to highlight prevention efforts because prevention is indeed the best medicine. And so we take that to an extreme. Uh, we actually practice fire prevention year round, but we do want to take the opportunity this month and share with you all the fire prevention activities that we have going uh, at the Life Safety Park and through the Fire Department. So what I'd like to do real quick is introduce our Life Safety Park manager, Bethany Everett, and she will highlight some of our activities.
Thank you, Chief, and to mirror his sentiments, thank you, Mayor and Council, for your consideration and support of this proclamation. Fire Prevention Month is really a time for all of us to examine our risk of home fires. Uh, truthfully, we're all at risk. The data from the last ten years tells us that even though the number of home fires that have occurred across the US has decreased, the number of deaths and fire injuries as a result of those fires is actually on the rise. So no one's immune, fire really doesn't wait. And so, uh, this year, as Chief mentioned, we celebrate Fire Prevention Month year round. But this year in particular, we are very excited to have our Fire Department clown troop back into Capel Elementary Schools. And we'll be providing what we call Fire and Life Safety Edutainment, providing our shows to over fifteen hundred pre-K through first graders in our Capel Elementary School. So very excited to be back in there after two years of absence from COVID. Uh, we'll continue to offer those throughout the month. And in addition to all of the classes and programs that we continue to offer throughout the year in person at Life Safety Park, we continue to promote fire and life safety tips and resources online through our online social media platforms, as well as through our website, which is lifesafetypark.org. We invite all of our community to connect with us, follow us, stay engaged, and stay up to date on all of the things that we, we have to offer throughout the year. So once again, fire really won't wait. We're appreciative of your support, and we just encourage you all to talk with fires, talk about fire safety with your families at home. Make a plan, talk about that plan, and practice it at least twice a year. So thank you very much for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Council member Hinojosa Smith, would you like to come join me? Council, for your consideration. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase the awareness of the disease, and whereas this year, more than two hundred and eighty-seven thousand new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the US, along with fifty-one thousand cases of non-invasive breast cancer, and over two thousand seven hundred men will also be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer. And whereas this year, more than fourth, forty-three thousand people will die from this terrible disease, and whereas death from breast cancer have continued to decline in women over fifty, but have remained steady for women under fifty since two thousand and seven as it still remains the second most common form of cancer and the second leading cause of death overall among American women. And whereas increased awareness, especially a family history and other common risk factors, preventative care, regular screenings, including mammograms, can help save lives through early diagnosis and prompt treatment. Whereas through early detection and improved treatments, there is a ninety percent five-year survival rate for women diagnosed with this disease. Therefore, I, Wes Mays, mayor of the city of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-two as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Capel to be affixed this eleventh day of October twenty twenty-two. Council? Um, council member Brianna Hinojosa Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a proclamation naming the month of October National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and authorizing the mayor's sign.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Matthew seconded, all in favor?
Long Hinojosa Smith, Carol John Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Did you have something to say by chance?
I'd love to, but I'd like to ask everybody who's here in support of breast cancer to come up here and join me because there's some pink out there. I'd ask for our Fire Department to also join me because I appreciate the fact that y'all, um, recognize, um, breast cancer too, if y'all don't mind, if you want to. But, um, well, I know. Thank you, guys, because I know that every, every October you wear your shirts and I really truly appreciate it. But, um, who's a survivor? Yeah, yay. So while cancer, especially breast cancer, doesn't discriminate, nor does it choose to come in October, we, I know it's been, uh, recognized that October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, I am a nine-year survivor. Um, I was diagnosed in May of twenty thirteen with triple negative breast cancer and, um, went through some difficult times. But, um, I'm here and I, I guess this is a time for me to just remind everybody, both men and women, to just do your, um, self-breast exams and, um, for women to do their mammograms and, uh, just not to miss your, your annual visit because I missed mine by six months and I always wonder if I would have detected it sooner. So all that to say is, um, please don't forget to do that. Um, I know there's also people now, I think now that it's post-pandemic, people are out walking, doing the three-day walk or the, are either, are any of y'all doing the walk? Okay, so they are raising funds for the walk. Um, and I ask that you, if, if, if you can, to just support them. I see them around Capel walking and, um, it, it, the, the funds go to, to make sure that we can help people just continue to, um, have mammograms or just to, to detect it early. So anyway, thank you to our Fire Department, thank you all for coming up here, I really appreciate it. But I appreciate you guys wearing pink, real men wear pink, and, um, I just want to say thank you. Do y'all want to say anything about activities or walk?
No, I'll let you.
My wife is a, a ten-year survivor and, uh, it, it really touches all aspects of the economic areas. It is a nondiscriminatory, uh, disease. What the, uh, Congress, what, it's Congress. The councilwoman said was very, is very, is very, uh, is very true. Get tested, have a, you know, get looked at. Um, the work that these ladies do is phenomenal. Each one of the ladies as a part of the Suzie Coleman Three-Day Walk has to raise- has to raise over $2,000 just to be able to walk in the three-day walks. The organization that's here in Capella, the Pink Souls in Motion, has actually raised over $2 million that's been going to Susan G. Coleman for breast research. And that is an extremely large amount of money for 150 ladies. So, three-day walks, 20 miles a day, that's a very small thing for them to do, for all that they have gone through, as you can attest and any other survivors can attest to, for what you have to go through to get through this. After 10 years, cancer came back, and I took my wife in less than 90 days. So, take care of yourselves and make cancer never touch your families. Thank y'all all very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you. Mayor Protem, would you come join me? Dr. Theodosis Marathoma, would you come join us, please? Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas the service provided by faith leaders is unique, they safeguard the spiritual well-being of the members of their congregations and reach out to the surrounding communities, and whereas because a faith leader represents many things to a congregation as a leader, spiritual guide, visionary, shepherd, overseer, teacher, preacher, intercessor, and much more, and whereas it appropriate for the communities to set aside a special time to recognize and affirm the blessings of such leadership, whereas congratulations to the Most Reverend Dr. Theodosis Marathoma Metropolitan, who is the 22nd Malangara Metropolitan to occupy the Holy Apostolic Throne of St. Thomas. Now, therefore, I, West Mays Mayor of the City of Capella, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, as Bishop Dr. Theodosis Marathoma Day in the City of Capella, Texas. It witnessed thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed this 11th day of October 2022. Counsel, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I move to approve the proclamation designating October 11th, 2022 as Bishop Dr. Theodosius Marathoma Day and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Have a second by Councilmember John. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol John Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Bijou, did you have a few words you wanted to say?
Yes.
You did.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. It's an honor for me to introduce my bishop, our bishop. As you heard from the proclamation, his name is Marathoma Theodosius Marathoma Metropolitan. He is the supreme leader of our church, and he's a dynamic leader, both spiritually and administratively. He's not only the leader for our own church, but he's also part of the World Council of Churches. I know you have held many positions there and passed many of the policies. So, we thank you for your service to the church and also to the World Council of Churches. And someone asked me recently, can you explain the Christian history and background in India? So, I will be very short and brief. We believe in 1852, Jesus' disciple, Thomas, St. Thomas, came to South India and spread the gospel there and converted many to Christianity. So, that is the history, and there are 32 million Christians are in India. And as you probably know, India is one of the largest countries with 1.4 billion people in the world, 1.4 billion people. 80% of them are Hindus, and 14% are Muslims, and 2.5 are the Christians. And we are from a state called Kerala, which is the southern state of India. It's about 20% population are Christians there. There are many denominations, Catholics, Jacobite, Marthomite, and we belong to Marthomite, and he is the supreme leader of that. So, he's the 22nd Malangara Metropolitan to occupy the Holy Apostolic Throne of St. Thomas. So, we congratulate you. We appreciate your service. Thank you for starting off our meeting with a prayer. Would you like to say a few words?
This is a great joy for me to be invited to be part and parcel of the council meeting of the City of Capella, and it's a very great honor. And it's the first time that a day is marked in my name, being a recognition for the Malangara Matama Syrian Church of Malaba. As Protem Mayor said, Bijou said, we trace our history to 52 AD when St. Thomas came over to the Malangara coast. And so, Allah, the bishops have visited this place, and I have been here as the diocesan bishop for a term of seven years. And now, I have assumed the responsibility as the Metropolitan of the Church for the last two years. And it's a joy to be here, to be honored by you, and particularly this day, to be remembered, not only by the City of Capella, but also myself and the members of my church. And on behalf of the members of the Malangara Matama Syrian Church, I thank you very much for the great honor that you have bestowed upon the position of the Metropolitan. And I assure you all the cooperation and assistance of the members of the Matama Church here in Texas. And I am told that this is the beautiful city where we can all feel happy and peace and all harmony. And I wish you all the best as you assume the charge and also carry out the responsibilities. God bless you, and God bless the city. Thank you.
I request all of that sense to come.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, Bishop, welcome to Capella. And it took the supreme leaders to bring this many people to the crowd. And I heard Mayor Protem Bijou Matthew say that if you guys stay all the way to the end of the meeting, he has a surprise for you. So, you might want to stay all the way to the end to see what that surprise is.
All right. Item number nine is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes. With the approval of a majority of the council members present, persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Tonight, we have four people signed up to speak. First on the list is Ms. Barbara Bailey. Ms. Bailey?
Hi, Barbara Bailey, 232 Plantation Drive. I'm here about the sidewalks and the curbs again. The sidewalks installed this year along Plantation Drive are trip hazards, and as a person that had a long recovery from a skull fracture, I don't want to see someone else hurt or killed. The CDC says one in five falls results in a broken bone or head injury. This is important. First, the sides of the ADA curb ramps that go from the sidewalk to the street level need to be changed to flare sides, just the sides, not the whole thing. Every state, including Texas, and ADA.gov guidelines, like where you get stuff from, text dot, all say the sides, the city installed, are trip hazards, and these in this type of location, they're used for another type of location. By changing the flare sides, the tall concrete islands and peninsulas will be removed and replaced with the flare sides. I attended the work session where the city attorney said the city would not be liable for any injuries on the sidewalk for tripping hazards. But I was told when I looked into it that under the Texas tort laws, the city can be sued. So, that's something to consider. Under the transportation, health and safety, environmental, federal, and Texas laws and regulations, the sidewalks apparently are supposed to accommodate bicyclists because the city allows bicycle traffic on the sidewalks. And they're considered part of the transportation facility. Sort of an odd name, but that's what they call it. And it appears that the ADA and engineering people, when I talked to them, said they were told that bikes weren't allowed on the sidewalks, so they weren't accommodated during that time period when they were designed. And it just seems to me that upper management or somebody should have, you know, have included those in the specifications so that they could have been done in a more proper way for our situation here in Capella.
Ms. Bailey, your time has expired.
Can I say one more sentence or two? Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm almost to the end of my paper. I try to time it. Being ADA compliant can actually complement other pedestrian and bicycle usage on the sidewalk. They're not majorly exclusive, and I hope the city council cares about the residents. We've already had a couple people fall over in my block, three that I know of, on the curbs. And I'm just talking about the sides of the curb ramps. That's basically what it boils down to. So, we're all talking about fire safety and breast cancer safety, and I hope we can have better curb ramp safety. Thanks very much. Hope I didn't hurt anything. I think moved.
Thank you very much. The second person signed up to speak tonight is Amid Ansari. Mr. Ansari? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hamid Ansari. I live in 337 Woodhurst Place, Capella. My name is Hamid Ansari. My family and I have been living, oh, I was going to ask Honorable Mayor and the rest of the council member, if you please allow me to have additional couple of minutes because I tried to do my best to finish the whole thing. If you please allow me to have, I greatly appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. My family and I have been living in Capella for 18 years, for the past three years at address 337 Woodhurst Place. My family has never encountered a dispute with any of our neighbors in the past years. The neighbor at 342 Woodhurst Drive moved back in their parents' house, sometimes in the middle of year to 2021. Few months later, they began having problems with us and other adjacent neighbors. They have installed an unauthorized bamboo fence and took a portion of the city property, which they claim they are entitled to have. Even the bamboo fence is allowed. It should have a five-feet setback from the alley, just like any other fence. They have put many large stone on the city property right at the entrance to Ansari's property. They have blocked the alley a number of times by standing in front of the Ansari's car, forcing Ansari's family to drive from the other side of the alley while cursing and screaming offensive words when children who are minors are in the vehicle. They play music 24 hours, seven days a week, with a different volume range in the backyard. Sometimes, two different music sources are played. The neighbor is repeatedly blowing the breeze from their driveway and alley to Ansari's driveway and gate. They put multiple trash cans on the city alley, which is obstructing the entrance to Ansari's driveway. The neighbor has been accusing Ansari for placing trash cans on the city property and neighbor's property, which has never happened. They grow tall plants on the front side of their house. The visibility is almost zero for the drivers, especially in the low-profile car, the low-profile car. The visibility is zero if a small child is walking on the sidewalk. Please note that across the street is a dock pond park. The neighbor and his partner kept coming to Ansari's property, taking pictures of Ansari's personal paperwork, moving Ansari's trash can and recycle from the place where it was originally placed to place where they think it should be, grab Ansari's belonging and throwing them to another neighbor's property or to the middle of Ansari's driveway. At one occasion, their neighbor, this neighbor, was kicking Ansari's recycled item on the alley. On the day, we built a fence and driveway gate to minimize the encounter and harassment from this neighbor. They installed a camera on the city property and faced it directly over Ansari's gate viewing inside the fence driveway. A few days later, they installed another camera on the tree within their property that overlooked the fence backyard and the rear entrance of Ansari's home. They scared five children by yelling at them while they stood by our gate, waiting for me to open the gate. Then, this neighbor walked out and started yelling at the children, telling them not to go to their property while he is recording them on his phone. The children never went to their property. The children ages are from six to 10 years old, and one 13-years-old, two of them were crying very hard. This neighbor has made a lot of untruthful statements and allegations against Ansari's in the appearance in the council meeting back in September 13 of 2022, for which I have proved. This neighbor and his partner have brought tremendous disturbance to this neighborhood, and I'm respectfully asking the city to help bringing the peace back to our neighborhood. The examples are only a fraction of what they have done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, sir.
The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Kristi Valentine. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Kristi Valentine, and my address is 701 Dove Circle. I'm co-owner with my husband of Valentine Premier Construction, and we've lived in the city for 25 years. I also am going to ask that, you know me, I'm long-winded. Even though I've tried to cut it down, I may need the extra couple of minutes. So, here we go. After attending the council work session tonight and also several months ago before the ARPA-funded grants were structured and released to the public, I attended that meeting and, like I said, tonight, and I've learned quite a bit even tonight about what's been going on. I'm happy to say that our business applied for and received the first ARPA grant, which I think was called the Rent and Mortgage. Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that. So, that's one of my things to say. The other two are coming. I'm also here to ask that the city put the application info back on the city website in a way that's obvious and easy to find. I've actually told, back when I learned about it, and I was so excited that our city was doing this, I told lots of people about it. And early on, we could find it on the website for the mortgage and rent, but not, you know, obviously, we didn't ever find the other one because I learned that the council put together some criteria that it only went out to certain people. But I ask that since these funds are still available, that you make this available on the website for people to find in an easy fashion. I even had one business tell me that they called recently and that they were told that the Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program was over and they couldn't apply for funding. I've learned tonight that that's not true. So, I'll be going to set that record straight with that business owner. But I also ask, the second thing, is that I ask that rather than extend the area, as you guys discussed tonight, to make it, you know, above Sandy Lake and then above 121, focus on the ones that are really suffering down in that area. And I'm not just talking about my business. That's another subject, too. I would like to talk to you guys about what makes a business actually retail or not retail. I think that some conversation should have been had with some of the businesses that you thought aren't retail to find out if they feel like they have any retail presence. Because even though we're a construction company, and I would have told you we're never retail, that has been proven to me to be wrong. After we moved off of Capella Road onto, on Denton Tap, we have walk-in people all the time now. So, I mean, I guess under the constraints, that would make me retail, right? People come in now because they're like... People come in now because they're like, oh, I see your sign, you're in a prominent area. We want to know if you're legit. Because unfortunately, in the construction industry, a lot of people are not legit. So they come to check us out. So rather than just decide that you want to increase the area, let's talk about the density of the businesses there and what do they really need? There are businesses there that didn't fit your criteria. And I know one in particular that has appointments. And so I guess if you have appointments, they didn't consider that retail. But people can't find her business. She's right there in the heart of exactly where it's all torn up right now. And people can't find her business, whether they have an appointment or they're just coming in to check out the facility. So that's a problem because she relies on those people to come in and check out her business in order to become a patient of her business. So that's really all I had to say tonight. Maybe I didn't need the extra minutes, but I appreciate you guys listening. And thanks again for putting this together and making those grants available. I'm sorry that more people don't know about it and aren't applying. I've talked to so many businesses that are like, oh, my gosh, I didn't know about that. I'm like, well, the first, you should have known about for sure because you should have gotten a letter or two, right? Everyone did, every business that's registered in the city? Is that correct? Oh, y'all can't answer. I forgot. Sorry. All right. That's it for me. Thanks again for all that you guys do. I appreciate your service to us.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Our last speaker is Ms. Madeline Anderson.
Hello. I will ask for the minutes as well. Oh, this is Madeline Anderson. Address is 140 West Sandy Lake Road. I'm a co-owner of Hand and Stone Massage and Facial Spa in Capel.
Thank you.
I will also ask for the minutes if hopefully I can get through all of it. My business is north of Sandy Lake, which means I am not eligible for the construction grant. I do want to start first and foremost, as you've each received notes from me, as well as at least 15 to 20 of my other business owner colleagues in the area. We are very grateful for the ARP funding to go throughout that first round and more and more grateful that you allowed the second round to go through. It was, if you noticed, very overwhelming within days, right? That money was gone from the first round. So if there's any question about what our businesses are going through, whether it be COVID-related or construction-related, we are still suffering. It is something that we are going well through, and we have teamed together, and we are working well together, and we appreciate your support. Though I am not eligible for the construction grant, I am here as a member-based business to remind you that we are retail. Whether I am eligible for that or not, my brothers and sisters in business are, and they are struggling hard. One of them can't be here today because he is in the hospital. So I am here on behalf of those business owners to tell you, though we are membership-based, walk-ins are key. I cannot grow my business if they cannot physically go into my building. And construction on that road is stopping many of those businesses receiving that as well, whether it be appointment-based or not. I also want to bring up that the conversation around whether or not those problems exist is something I've heard on multiple different meetings. I've been to multiple. I've listened to them, even though I wasn't here. I've watched them. I do spend the time watching you guys. You're not alone. We are there on the other side of the streaming. And I have been watching, and I hear what you're saying. And I'm here to tell you, on behalf of my friends of the chamber, my friends of the businesses, we are in need, and I appreciate Councilman Long's point earlier of giving us the benefit of the doubt, right? The overwhelming response has shown that the applications are there, the money is needed. And I ask that you give us that benefit of the doubt. There will be money to come back and to be reallocated. But give those businesses that were not eligible for the grants to have a chance before we reallocate any further funds outside of what you've already done. That's it. I thank you guys all again so much for your time, and I look forward to see what you guys help us out with as businesses in the future.
Thank you for coming tonight. All right. Item number 10 is our citizen survey results with Ms. Chavetta and Ron Gailey. We're all very much looking forward to this. This is always very interesting and enlightening. So thank you very much for being here, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to bring some joy to your evening because I think we all could use some. And actually, I'm here to share with you the results of our citizen satisfaction survey that was completed in September. In just a moment or two, I'm going to ask Ron Gailey, who's here tonight in person, to walk you through the highlights of the survey and to answer questions that you might have. But I want to start off by saying that this has been a really good survey experience. We received more responses than we ever had. And we also received a number of comments that are going to help provide insight on ways that we can improve our service delivery. The news is very encouraging. Residents are generally happy with the service that they receive. They would recommend Capel as a great place to live, and their interactions with staff are mostly positive. So overall, the city's in a very good place. Before I introduce Ron, I do have a few comments. The city conducts these surveys every two to three years, and the last one was done in 2019, so it was time. And the purpose of these surveys is to learn what's important to our residents and how the city measures up in terms of our service level to those items that are important to them. What we use this information for is to identify where improvements can be made so we can focus on making our citizen experience better. Our goal is to provide an exceptional level of service to the community, and we can do that by knowing where we need to augment or sustain our efforts. As I mentioned, the survey was very successful in terms of response. We utilized multiple marketing methods, including email, texting, the city app, newsletters, the website, and more. And as a result, we received 1,966 responses. In this presentation, you will see what services, programs, and facilities are important to our residents and how they rate the service level for those items. You will also see a sampling of the large number of comments we received from open-ended questions. And I want to let you know that staff will be reviewing every comment from the survey, looking for common themes so we can address those that have the most impact on our residents. I think that you'll be very pleased with what we've learned from this survey. And with that, I'd like to ask Ron Gailey to come up to the podium and walk you through the results of the survey. Thank you.
I'm glad to be here, everyone. And it is rare that I meet face-to-face. Usually, we do it over Zoom, which is how we kicked it off in the first place. What you're looking at is a dashboard that is available to all of you now. And if you wish, it can be available to your citizens. There are several cities that I work with, and as soon as the results are presented to the city council and they're ready, they post it on their website. That might be your plan here. I think it is. But so we're looking at the actual site here. And I want to tell you a few things about the study in general. First of all, it was done collaboratively, although I provided the framework for how the survey would be executed. We worked carefully with the city staff. And as I recall, even members of the city council reviewed it to make sure that we had the things in the survey that you cared about. And I think it was a huge success. And we did get a lot of completes here. I have 1938 here. Vicky mentioned 1966. But when we put on a filter for race, we dropped a couple of people out who didn't share their race. But we got a big response rate, and most of them did come from email. As you can see, 75% came from email, but another 25% came from other ways, like SMS and social media and the website. And there were fractionally other methodologies that worked. But this was very successful in getting them. Now, the survey design, I have listed it here on the side here so that you can see the survey design. And the way we work it is initially, we want to just validate that they are from Capel and that they are valid and that they are legitimate for your city. So we do that. We make sure that there are some methodologies. Among them is a map, and I'll show you what the map, how the map worked and what we got out of that. Next thing we do is we just kind of get a generic overview of the city. How are things going? Would you refer it to a friend? Do you think we're going in the right direction or the wrong direction? I'll show you some of that information. But the core of the city is the third step, and it is a city services deep dive. And when I did it for the first city that I did this for, there were five major areas that cities wanted to have a deep dive into their, whenever they did a citizen survey. And they wanted to know about the city's facilities, and they wanted to know about the qualities and benefits of living in the cities that the citizens looked for. They wanted to know about development and growth issues and safety and security issues. And they wanted to know about operational issues like maintenance of parks, maintenance of streets, so forth like that. And so the way we designed the survey was around those five themes. When we first, we find out what's most important to people. And once we know what's most important, then we get a rating of the things that they care about. And so people don't rate everything, they rate the things they care about. And the reason we do it that way is it keeps the survey short, and yet you get the critical information you need about what's important. So it's the best of both worlds. Your last survey was probably about 20, 25 minutes. This survey was about 12, 11. So half as long, and yet you get more information than you got before because of the design. And then we have other topics that we'll go into. Now, I want to show you a couple of things, just jump in. We mentioned city facilities and events. And right here are the city facilities and the events. And the first thing we ask people is which two are most important to you? And you can see on the left-hand side, the bars there, that they cared about city parks and the library and the core. But, you know, some people may have picked the wagon. Tail park is their most important. It just happens to be that fewer did. And so you see the priority there. And if it was important to them, we say, well, so how is the city doing? And so then you're able to see at a glance that most of your city facilities and events are doing wonderfully well. And that's a theme that we see for Capel, is that they're very, very pleased with how things are going. And the, do you have a problem? Well, there are a few people who don't, are not happy with the wagon tail, the wagon tail dog park. But you can also say, well, we'll maybe get to that when we're ready because it's a far lower priority, right? Qualities and benefits. These are things that people may look for in your city, parks and the appearance and restaurants. Here, people had a harder time prioritizing, right? I mean, a lot of these things are important to people. But you do have the order of priority, and among them are restaurants and retail. And as you can see, there's a lot of people who would love to see your restaurants and retail strengthened. And it's good to be able to see that priority here. We'll come back to that later on. There are people who care about the workforce and paratransit. And those who do care about it are, feel fairly strong about it, but you can see the priority here overall. Growth and development issues are shown here. This one has a lot more clarity in the growth and in the order. And what I want to show you is right here on the right-hand side. And you may wonder about this yourselves. Can we sort this and filter this by different groups of people? And you can. It's very easy. So for example, if you wanted to look at people who have children in the home or people who have been in the city for, let's say, 15 years or longer, and find out if there's a difference between people who've been in the city long versus the short timers, it's very easy to do that on any page. And you can just kind of click through the filters and choose the people you want to see. And for the most part, we don't see a great deal of difference. But there are some things that, and I'll point out a couple of things as we go along that I thought were interesting, but that it's very easy to look at these filters and turn them on. But in the growth and development, they're really concerned about the maintenance and public infrastructure. On the other hand, you're doing quite well. So congratulations on that. Minimizing traffic congestion is an area where there's a little bit more frustration. I do want to say that I did a deep dive on that to find out if it was pass-through traffic or if it happens to be people who live in the city in frustration with various elements of the city. It's not your pass-through traffic, and that's not what they're talking about, although that may add to it. But the real concern was really in regards to too much maintenance being done, all in the same place, boxing them in and making it difficult to get in and out of where they live. But, so there was some concern with that. When we come down to safety and security, you can see that things are pretty well. They feel good about your preparedness for emergencies. But there was, I heard some lady here today, concerned about repairs to sidewalks and alleyways, and that might be something to keep an eye on. Now, all of these are very important, these five areas. And I just wanted to tell you that in general, things are good for maintenance and repair of streets is an area you might want to look at. But once they've gone through each of these five areas, we show them the things that they chose. When each area, they picked two. Two out of the city facilities and the events, two out of the qualities and the benefits, two out of each of those areas. And so they picked the 10 things they'd said were most important to them. And after we did that, we said, well, here are the 10 things you picked as most important to you. Which are the three that are most important? So you're able to get the most important of the most important. And that's where this next page comes in. These are the most important of the most important. And so you're able to look at all of the things that were on the survey, which is about 50 items. This page shows the top 20. So anything on this page could be important, or the top 20. And if you maybe pick the top 10 or so, you're in really a good place to, things where if there's a bit of a gap, it might be something that you focus on or find a way forward in the coming, in the coming years. See if you can't get some of that strengthened. But for the most part, it was very, very positive. I want to show you one thing. Speaking about the good news for the direction of the city, there's a couple of things I'd like to show you. One is, how do you feel about the direction of the city? And we asked citizens three questions. Has it changed since you moved in? In other words, has it improved, stayed the same, or gotten worse? And I have only seen one other city that was as strong as you are here in Capel. And that was Keller, Texas. And Keller was really good, too. But you guys are strong. And the right direction, wrong direction, among the best I've seen in any city. So it's quite impressive. And what's also impressive is the third one, which is compared to other cities in your neighborhood. How do you feel about us? Are we much better, somewhat better, about the same, somewhat worse, or much worse? And I have seen cities that was just kind of the opposite of this, right? Some cities were in real trouble, and they're grateful they have a baseline and they're going to move forward. But you're starting from a position of strength. It was very nice to see that nearly 80% say you're much better or somewhat better than surrounding cities, which I think is something to just pat yourself on the back on. I want to show you one other thing. We asked people if they would refer their friends. Refer Capel to a friend is a great place to live. And we use this zero to 10-point scale. That's used routinely in business to get a handle on a, they call it a net promoter score. And if they give a nine or a 10, people are considered a promoter, like they're like pom-pom waving, loving people who just feel really great about your city or your service. And if they give a six or below, they're normally considered a detractor. Some, maybe a five or six is more of a passive. But they're kind of, in research parlance, are considered a detractor. And if you take your promoters minus your detractors, you get a score, which you see yours is 47. I only saw one that was higher, and that was Keller, and they were 54. But you guys are doing really well. And just to let you know, like, this is used across a variety of industries. Banks are like 30, you know. IT departments are normally in the 20s. And healthcare is in the 60s. So whenever you get, like, you're somewhere, like, cities, that's a tough thing, right? To keep people happy and to satisfy all the people in a city and to be as high as you are. It's pretty impressive. And so that's something. Now, after people answered this question, like, would you refer a friend? We had two open-ended questions in the survey, and I want to tell you a little bit about what we've done. So we asked people, once they rated the city, why? Why did you give that rating? And we got 1,938 responses. That's a lot of responses, and it's not easy to go through them all. But we've made it as easy as we could for you. So I want to show you, we get the responses overall, and there's a lot of responses. And we have all of them here. But what we did so that you could figure out the responses is we grouped them into categories. So we went through, and everything is grouped according to various themes. And if they mentioned schools in a positive light, we put a smiley face in front of it, and we put schools. And if they mentioned, oh, we just love this place, it's a great place to live, it's in general, love it and great, and it's a great place to be, right? And if they mentioned safety and security, and it's a peaceful place, we put it in there. If they complained about something, we put a down arrow and we indicated what it was. So you see, some people are talking about taxes and utilities and water. And some people talked about the business district and the lack of shopping, and they wish there were more restaurants and so forth. So when you do this, we have the detail here. And so on this page, we have the detail. And if you go up to the top, you can look into anything that we have in the major categories. And your city team can do that. So if there's people who are talking about safety and security, maybe in a negative way, and they want to look into it, you can just turn that one on. And frankly, there's nobody who said that. If we have cost of living concerns, then we get them popping up here. And these are people who talked about cost of living and the event. So if you ever have a city council meeting where you want to talk about cost of living and what to do, you can get a lot of responses here. And because we And because we went to nearly 2,000 people, there'll be quite a few comments about nearly everything. You're not going to be lacking responses. If we only had 400 or 500 surveys, you'd have problems. You'd get down to two people or one person. But here, you're going to get down to 50 or 40 or some number that's reasonable. Also, you can tell a little bit about the person. You can tell that this is from a 55 to 74-year-old female who's lived in the city 15 to 19 years. Now, you don't know everything, but you know a little bit about this person. And you can know that for anybody when you look at their responses. I want to show you one final response. In the very bottom, near the bottom, we said, is there anything more you would like to say to city leaders? This is a good question. The first one is sort of like, why would you recommend Capel to a friend or city, or to a friend? And so that's a generic top of mind, they give you some really good things. But by the time we get to the very end of the survey, they've reviewed a lot of topics. And they've kind of thought through a variety of things. And then we say, do you have anything more you would like to say? And about half of the people don't have anything they'd like to say. But some do. And if they do have something they'd like to say, they tell us. And here's where we get a little bit more detail about the roads and the streets, or about the parks and the trails. And some just gave suggestions, and I just put them in suggestion. And that's just kind of a random hodgepodge of suggestions that they have for the city. And some of them said, I love the survey, and that's down at the bottom. And I put that in there just so that I could pat myself on the back for, thank you for the survey. But, but here, whenever your teams, whenever you have your city leaders or your city employees, if you'd like to go through something in a little bit more detail, ask them to go through this and read those comments and ring them before you. And you'll have just a healthy, random set of the population, not just as few people who tell you about some of these topics. And so you'll be able to use this for a whole year. I did a survey for Bernie. He's been using it for a little over 12, 13 months, the same survey. And he says they're into it every week. Just, just making sure that these things are fresh and top of mind and in front of the council. And so I think with that, I've, I've covered the major themes. There's more pages that you could look at if you wish, but maybe I've taken enough time. And we can go into, I can answer questions or go into depth on anything you might want to know about.
Thank you very much. It's always good to see, you know, that feedback so you can take action and correct. Counsel, any questions from the dice? Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Was there a reason why it might be strategic or something? But the option of the answers, that none of the answers above choice was not put in?
Oh, like a none of the above?
Right.
Like, which of these two are most important to you, none of the above? We could do that. It is really nice, even if they don't feel real deeply about it, that they pick the two that they care most about, so that you get enough ratings. So that would be the main reason, is just so that you get thorough ratings all the way through. I did see a couple of people who said, I wish I had a none of the above. But, and it's something to consider. I would recommend against it, though, personally. I think that this makes it very clean. You get your 10 responses from people. You know, at least 10 items are rated in the survey all the way through. It is something we could do, though, very easily. But I have not done it that way, and I personally feel it's a better way, the way we've done it.
Has it been done in other city surveys, or?
Where we have not shown it? No, I've always done it this way. And frankly, it was, it wasn't until Capel that I saw somebody say, I wish I had a none of the above response. But they did say it here in this city, and I remember that.
Okay.
Might have been you. Could have been you, you know, but I do remember reading that comment. And it's a valid, like, it's a valid concern. And by the way, I saved, I saved all of the concerns, like, all of those about future survey improvements, like, there's a bucket. And I put them all in there, and we'll discuss that for next year.
And the other question I had was, you mentioned that, I guess, vast majority responses were because of the email that was sent out?
Correct.
And that email is from whom?
So the way we did this, and I'll show you how this is. So here's the respondent source, where they came from. And we got the utility billing list from the city.
So you're saying from the city email?
You guys provided me the email addresses, and so they, we went to them. And then the city sent out the SMSs. I didn't, you know, because I don't have authority, I can't send out an SMS. But the city can. And so the city sent out the SMSs, and we got a lot from that. And then social media and Facebook, the city sent out. So everything other than the email, the city did that. But I provided the links so that the city could do it. And then from the link, I can tell where they came from. Each link was a little bit unique, had a little.
And so if I, if I got the email and I forwarded that email to somebody else, is that something that you?
It could happen, but, but because of the emails, they would answer it and you could not. So if you forward it to someone else, we get one response per email. But, but we can get multiple responses from the SMS, from the social media and the website. And for that reason, when we were done, I checked the IP addresses and made sure that more than three IP addresses. So we can do, like, two from a household would be logical. But more than three, I would check them. And then I would just look to make sure that they were indeed unique and that they weren't the same, because you could have a library or a care center or something, and everyone's in there. And you don't want to remove them. But anything that looked suspicious or duplicative, I would remove.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem Matthew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So it's great to see 1,966 responses. My question is, if I received an email and I fill it out, I get an SMS, I fill it out. I get a website, I go there and fill it out. Social media on Facebook, is it all the five counted?
Yeah, that, that could happen. That could happen, and that's why we check the IP address. So the IP address, now, if you did it on your computer and your phone, you'd be two, and I'd let you through. Like, there's a minor chance of cheating with that. So there is that small chance. But let me tell you, we went through every single comment, and we were looking for things, right? And I looked for patterns. And so if you got a couple that snuck through, they might have. But you don't have any real serious ballot stuffing here. It'd just be like one or two that were able to do it, right? So that could happen, though.
Thank you. You mentioned you used some of the questions in other cities, similar to what we have, or you copied some from other cities, too?
As the framework is the same in all cities. We just make sure the questions or the specifics about the city are relevant to Capel or relevant to that city. But the framework is identical across cities.
So the questions were different?
So like, you ask about your parks. You ask about, you know what I mean? And, but, but yeah, it's a very similar survey to other cities. The framework is the same. So what we do is we have a framework that we use that guarantees it'll work well. And then within, then there's a lot of freedom for the specifics within each area, like safety and security, or, or, or the facilities are unique to your city. And the, like, the Keller cities are Keller's facilities, and yours are your facilities. But other than that, the framework is very similar.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? So, okay, Councilmember John.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Just other question. We got 1,966 responses out of 42,000 residents. How, can you tell me how that compares with other similar-sized cities?
Yeah. You did second best of any city that I've done. So I, we did Marco Island, Florida, which got over 3,000. So they did really well. I had another one, Lago Vista got nearly 2,000, but they were only a city of 10,000. So they did really well. It kind of, like, we could, probably could have gotten more had we really worked, I think, the social media side of things and so forth, we really could have. And maybe next year, we try. But you did really well. And anytime you get as many as you got out of a city, like a 5% response rate nearly, it's pretty good, especially when you have kids. So you take out the kids, you probably got a closer to a 10% response rate. And that's not bad for a city of this size. As a matter of fact, if you do a national survey and they do fewer than that. Like, you know, when they say, oh, the polls say whatever, it's like 1,200. So you did way better than most of the national polls within your own city.
So I have a question for Vicki. What's going to be our steps going forward to publish this or publicize it, or what are we going to do?
Well, we're going to get the dashboard up on the website by the end of the week. And then what we're going to do is market some of the special, the items that came out of this survey. For example, we might say something like, 75% of the community would recommend Capel as a place to live, that sort of thing. So we'll be putting together some marketing tidbits to put out into the community, and also make sure that people know that this dashboard is available so that they can access it on the website, and they can also filter it and see the different things that have come about as a result.
Okay, thank you. Well, appreciate your time. These surveys, you know, we look forward to them. They really do help us plan for the future and know where our activities are. I mean, there's some things here that aren't a big surprise, like the restaurant comments. That's not, not a surprise. It's something that we struggle with, and we know it's there. But it, it also lets us know that it's also in our residents' minds. So that's just a reaffirmation. So appreciate the time and appreciate the data, and looking forward to seeing the dashboard when it goes live.
Could I just add one other thing? That I know you haven't had much time to look at this yourself, but when you do, if you've got questions or concerns or things you want us to look specifically into, just let us know, and we'll take care of that.
One, one thing to mention really quickly is, we asked a question, would you be willing to participate in future research? And 40% of the people said they would. So that's about 800 people who said, yeah, I'm willing to take future research. So if you have any deep-dive questions, or if you'd like to get into something, we can go to people who answered certain ways and say, we would like some feedback, by the way. And if we want to have a group of people maybe come into a little, little focus group or discussion or something, we could do that and get them. And the people who volunteered to participate on the left, on the side, they're almost identical to the people who said no. So there's no bias here. It's a good representative group that we can tap into anytime over the coming year and do a little bit more deep dives, if you'd like.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, item number 11 is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or pre-pass council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. We do need to pull item B and consider it separately since there is a presentation that needs to go along with that so that we understand the content. Were there any other items that needed to be pulled? Councilmember John has requested that item number H be pulled as well. So let's go ahead and move forward with item B. Ashley.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm here tonight to give you an update to the conversation that was had during work session at the September 13th meeting. The discussion was regarding placement of temporary signs, specifically the political signs that are placed with driven posts at our polling location, which is town center. We will be a polling location for both early voting and election day. So in the past, installation of these large signs that have the driven posts have damaged underground irrigation as well as electrical lines. The city itself has been responsible for all of the repairs. And in addition to that, placement of such signs have limited the sight range of drivers exiting and entering town center in the main drive off of Parkway. The proposed ordinance amendment would not restrict the placement of the smaller signs, which are typically 18 by, 18 inches by 24 inches, just with the exception of the site triangle. So I just want to reiterate that. So tonight, I have an exhibit for you. And I'll just go through the different shaded areas. So the first shaded area is the 100-foot prohibit, area that is prohibited when, excuse me, that is prohibited from electioneering. When, when we are polling location, that area is not allowed to have signs or anybody actually approach voters. Indicated in the bluish, kind of green area now tonight is the area where electioneering is allowed. So then the yellow areas are the medians that council discussed at the last work session. Those do in fact have irrigation and electrical lines buried beneath them. Now, what I do want to point out to you, the areas that are circled off of Parkway was not discussed at the last, at the last work session. But those areas do have electrical and irrigation lines in them. So that is what I have circled tonight for you to remember when you give me direction. And then the areas in red are the site triangles that would, we would not allow for signs posted in that area at all. That is small signs and large signs. So tonight, I just need direction in terms of the ordinance and the way that the exhibit will look. Would you like to have the larger posts prohibited in the areas off of Parkway? That is my question, too.
Specifically, your recommendation is, since there are electric and irrigation lines in the area along Parkway, that that also be included in the?
In order to maintain our property?
In the iron post?
Yes, sir.
So counsel, that is really the item for consideration here. Everything else is as was presented to us previously. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Ashley, I think, if I remember correctly, we did discuss about these two locations. And I thought we actually said that we would rather keep or allow the bigger signs in that area as long as they're out of the triangle, the triangle on both sides, so that it'd be more visible for the public that are actually, you know, going by the Parkway. And in fact, I think I also mentioned one time that having signs that are not just small but bigger out there, it does actually attract a lot of people that are driving by. They didn't realize there was an election going on, and it does, you know, kind of guide them into, you know, remind them to come and vote.
Yes, sir. So after just due diligence and working with Public Works and the engineering staff, I just wanted to bring that forward to you to, to let you know that there are, in fact, lines there. I wasn't aware that there were at the last discussion, but after working with them, I can confirm that there are lines.
And we never had any issues with irrigation or power line with the posts being placed in those areas?
Not in the last four years that I'm aware of.
Is there a particular, of that yellow, I guess, of the yellow area that you circle with red? Is there a particular area that actually is more prone to the irrigation or electrical that?
Not that I'm aware of. This was really just to allow you to make the decision. That was why I brought, or that's why I shaded that area yellow. Just so you know that there are electrical and irrigation lines there.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Ashley, I just have a question. So in the median where the yellow color is, what is allowed?
The smaller, the smaller signs that allow for the smaller stakes. So those really, we call them bandit signs. The ones that you can just stake really easily into the ground that don't require driven posts.
What is the size?
So it really depends on the type of sign that you're talking about. What the ordinance allows for is the smaller stake that typically supports the 18 by 24 sign.
Okay. Now, the question is, on the area facing the Parkway where the yellow line says, you are asking us to consider not to have any signs?
No, no, just driven post signs. The large T-posts that you have to drive into the ground. That is what has typically caused the damage to the landscaping and the electrical lines.
So which means no big signs in the town center area?
That is what I'm, that's what I'm asking counsel tonight for direction.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. But you're just talking about the posts because technically, they could actually have the smaller H-stake signs with, that would support several, you know, you could put several on there and actually have a big sign there.
Yes, mhm.
Right? So, so you're actually talking about the posts, the big posts, that's the issue?
We're trying to, we, I'm asking, or I'm recommending prohibiting the large posts, yes. That is what has typically damaged our, the property.
So Mayor, I just want to say that last time, when this discussion did actually come up, I think also Councilmember Neville's was, you know, up, I think also councilmember Neves was, you know, in favor of actually allowing the signs there, which he's not here to actually, you know, discuss about as well. I mean, I'm in favor of allowing the signs because it does attract a lot of the people that are driving by. But again, councilmember Neves was not here to support his, you know, supportive of it last time when we had the discussion. So.
The topic that Ashley was wanting to bring forward today was something that she was not aware of at the last meeting. Councilmember Hinoza Smith?
Yeah, I think actually councilmember June did it clarify. It was that you're not asking for there not to be any big signs. It's just, it's how they're actually anchored there with the big posts. So just no use of big posts?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Hill, I see a question there.
And do we define big post? I mean, I know what you're, what we're talking about, the little ones that you can put in with your foot. That's really what we want to limit it to, but is there a definition in there?
In the ordinance, there is a size.
Okay.
It's a 3/30 seconds of an inch in diameter of the H-frames stakes that you referred to. Councilmember June.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So council, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so it's no 4x4 signs allowed?
Nope.
No, sir. That, I apologize. Only the large stakes that require the, almost the mechanism in which you drive them into the ground, that's what I'm asking, or that's what I'm recommending to prohibit. It's not the size of the sign, it's the, it's the driving stake into the ground.
So just to clarify there, this is not putting any restriction on the size of the sign whatsoever, as long as it's below, what, 36 square feet?
Yes. What is required by the ordinance, I'm not recommending to maximize, minimize the size of the sign.
It's just the?
It's just the way in which you anchor the sign into the ground.
The structure that's put into the ground that's damaging the, our infrastructure. Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to say that one of the things that we do have to take into consideration is part of the reason why they do use those sturdy posts is so that they don't have to continuously go back and readjust because those posts, those H-stakes, they're not strong. And we know that if there's some wind and things like that, they're having to come back and do it again and over and over and/or even blow out of the area, which is a more problem. But part of the reason why they use those sturdy stakes is to secure it and not have it, you know, swaying or moving or being out of the place as well. So that's also things I think that we should take into consideration, not just here, but all over the city as well.
So council, she's looking for an opinion. What's the, what ordinance should she bring back before us?
So I do want to say that early voting begins on October 24th, so I would need a decision tonight.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So I'm going to say that we did discuss this before and we did talk about allowing the signs, the stakes in the red area because it has been, you know, allowed. And on top of that, I think there are some other candidates that might be running that they don't know and they're counting on that probably already made some of the signs as well. So I think having considered that, I'm hoping we don't have any incidents, but seeing that there's been many that's been put out there, I just don't see it. So I think that my opinion is to allow them to go and put the posts for bigger signs for, you know, to make it safe or steady.
I can't.
You're talking about in the yellow areas fronting Parkway?
The front, correct. Along the side, along the road of the Parkway Boulevard, that's circled right now in red.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
So I guess my question for you then is, we already had discussed and agreed that the area in the medians that were marked with the yellow hashes, we had agreed that those were not good areas to put the posts in. So I don't, I guess I was unaware that we had utilities. I guess we should have known better. But if we know that we have utilities, electrical and irrigation up there, I don't see the difference in argument between the two areas.
I really don't know how deep the median. My impression was that last time, the median that we're talking about along the, I guess, the center lane was not as deep to a point where we actually did have an incident.
So to clarify, the electrical conduit is buried 18 inches deep and the irrigation is about six to eight inches deep. So that's just for clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Ashley, we appreciate the research that you've done on this and I think that your recommendation is valid. So thanks for the help.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
I have to say I agree with councilman Long. If you got to, you know, come back out and put your sign back up because it blew down, it's not a big deal. I mean, there was a time when you had to take them up every night and put them back down. I mean, I don't want to say, you know, that that was either right or wrong, but if you've got, if you've got to do a little bit of extra work to get them looking pretty again, then so be it. So I'm opposed to the large stakes principally because of the risk of the electrical lines not being damaged, but the people actually being hurt. I mean, we're talking, you know, serious safety concerns there. And I'd just rather not run the risk.
Councilmember Hinoza Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ashley, thank you for the information and the detail and the recommendation. Same thing, I see it as a safety issue and you're right. I mean, there's been people who come out and put their signs when they're not supposed to and they have to come take them out. And some of those big post ones have been some of those. So having to drive them in, take them out, drive them back in regardless, just becomes a huge issue. So I, you know, I support your recommendation.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I would also support the recommendation. I look at the other polling locations around town and most of the time, those don't have a lot of large signs. They have some of the smaller signs and I think they're relatively successful being at those other locations. So I would actually move to approve item 11, number B, as is drafted so far, the ordinance.
Wow. We have a motion and have a second from councilmember Hill. Is there any further discussion? I apologize, I almost got off the Robert's rules there, so sorry for that. Sorry for that. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of 11B as written?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carroll, Hill in favor. John and Matthew, the motion carries.
Not used to doing double duty, are you?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 11H is consider approval of and awarding RFP number 190 for the annual holiday lights program to premier lighting in the amount of $240,608 as budgeted and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. Mr. Shore?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have found the information that councilmember June was asking.
So for the record, just kind of explain what that was and then?
Okay, there was item, it said 32, 2.5.5. It was saying that it was removed or revised. I'm not sure of the exact wording, but that was no longer there. It had been removed from the bid, the RFP. And what that was is when they issued the RFP originally, they inadvertently left in the budget number from the previous RFP four years ago, which did not take into account our additional buildings or the fact that now that Parks is combined with it. So that was revised and sent out that that was removed because it was an incorrect number. They gave them a limiting number of 150,000.
So that's where the difference from the previous year, I guess, the proposal or the RFP from this year?
That number was from four years ago. We have gone up in small increments in the previous years as we've added buildings. And when I went to the council, I gave the updates because of the buildings and, but the number, but this time we went out for a full RFP with competitive bids and that number was left in from what the council had approved four years ago for the previous RFP.
Was our previous contract with the other company, if I remember, I think there was an option to renew at the somewhat rate? Was that already?
Correct, but we had to increase the contract by, it's the same, same company has won the RFP, but we had to increase it by such amount that it required us to go out to bid because of the addition of the Parks to the one contract. It exceeded the amount where we could just raise it.
Okay, so the previous contract that we had the options, that actually has, I guess, was at the end of the term? Is that, is that right or?
It was at a point where we could have renewed it if the contract amount had not increased.
Okay, so they actually came back with higher bid?
Actually, they came back with their same amount that we, that they charged us last year. It's just that last year, the portion of it was paid under Parks and that was, and I just came to you with the contract for facilities. And this year, what you're seeing is a combination of the entire city under one contract.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If I understand correctly, the last year when you made the presentation, you mentioned the company exercised the fourth year option.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So this year is the new contract?
This is a completely new contract. We took competitive bids, premier ended up with the lowest bid and was awarded the contract again this year, or we'd like to award the contract with your approval.
So all the requirements that we had for this year, increased lighting capacity or what changed from previous year to this year?
The Andy Brown East, the decoration out there last year was, came out of the Parks budget. So this year it was, it was added to one contract and it's coming completely out of the facilities budget. So by combining it underneath one contract, we increased the amount where we were required to go out to bid.
I understand where the money is coming from? My question is not that. My question is?
Oh, it's exactly, it's basically the same service that we had last year.
Same service?
Yes.
No increase in lights or anything like that?
Correct. It's almost, it's a duplicate of what we had last year. They're going to upgrade, update some, some items because of the age of them, but other than that, it's, it's basically exactly what we had last year, the same service.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shore, the 240, 608 says that it was as budgeted. Is that the budget that we approved in this year?
The budget that was approved was for 250,000. The bid came in under the budget.
And that's the, and you've answered the question as to the difference there, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on 11H. Councilmember Hill and seconded by councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carroll, John, Matthew, Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we have consent agenda items 11A, C, D, E, F, G, and I to consider.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number 11, consent agenda, A, C, D, E, F, G, and I.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carroll, John, Matthew, Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is the, is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. This is to consider approval of an ordinance designating Rochester Sensors Reinvestment Zone number 114 pursuant to section 312.201 of the Property Redevelopment Tax Abatement Act and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to hold a public hearing and to give consideration to an ordinance designating Rochester Sensors LLC as a reinvestment zone number 114. Rochester Sensors is a global manufacturer of high-quality gauges, sensors, switches, and systems used to measure liquid levels. The company was founded in 1913. It's currently headquartered in Dallas, Texas, but it also has manufacturing facilities in Mexico, Belgium, the United Kingdom, and China. Due to the proposed incentive agreement and other factors, Rochester Sensors has selected Capella as their new global headquarters. The company will occupy approximately 80,000 square feet of space at 1025 South Beltline Road. Rochester Sensor will have 200 employees at the Capella location and they will sign a minimum of a seven-year lease term. The company will add approximately $3.6 million in furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And while a majority of their inventory will be subject to triple free port tax exemption, there will be tax generating revenue from the business. Before tax abatement can be granted, a reinvestment zone must be created. A public hearing must be held before an ordinance can be approved to create the reinvestment zone. And this agenda item satisfies both of those requirements. The public hearing is held to determine if the improvements in the zone are feasible, practical, and of benefit to the land. This ordinance will create reinvestment zone number 114 as stated before. The public hearing notice was published in the Rambler on Saturday, October 1st, 2022, meeting the state requirement for at least a seven-day public hearing notice. And the public hearing is for the designation of a reinvestment zone for Rochester Sensors, property described as Park West Commerce Center, Lot 2R3, Block 2, which is 16.8 acres located north of Airline Drive and west of South Beltline Road. And you can see the designation on the map on the, on the screens. And if city council does approve this agenda item, a public notice will also be placed on the city's website for a minimum of 30 days before the tax abatement agreement will be brought forward for consideration. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Council. Any questions for Ms. Hurley? This is a public hearing. We did not have anybody signed up to speak. So Council, any, any other discussion? Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hurley, is that, are those properties currently occupied or empty?
The building that you're looking at, the 80,000 square feet, is currently empty, but the rest is occupied.
And how long has it been?
I don't know the exact time that it's been empty.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Entertain a motion? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved, oh, we need to close the public hearing first. Moved to approve agenda item number 12. Do I need to read the entire thing? No.
No, sir, you're good. Do I have a second? Councilmember Carroll has a second. All in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carroll, John, Matthew, Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Item number 13 is a city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one item for this evening. So if you are looking for a new career, we have a great opportunity coming up. So if you are looking for a new career, we have a great opportunity coming up soon. The city will host its semi-annual Work in Capel Virtual Job Fair from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 25th. This event allows job seekers to check out several companies and positions in one place, connect with recruiters, and take control of their future all from the comfort of their home or on the go from their mobile device. Just update your resume and register at capel.ez virtualfair.com by October 24th. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 are the Mayor and Council reports. I believe Councilmember Hill had something very briefly to report on.
Yes, last week I was extremely fortunate to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony of the exciting and dynamic Verispace Capel. We, the council, are so happy to keep them here as they are an integral part of our community. Vary's generosity and dedication to the city, Capel, is truly invaluable.
Thank you very much. And what was your comment? The space was light and airy and did you use a?
No, it's dynamic.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a great space. It really is. If you get an opportunity to go visit.
Councilmember John was adding very dynamic.
Very. See what you did there.
Sorry. Thank you very much. As you're probably aware by previous conversations with Ashley, the city of Capel will hold a special election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, asking voters whether or not to reauthorize two propositions concerning the allocation of sales and use taxes paid on goods and services purchased within the city limits. Reauthorization of the sales tax will not result in an increase in the sales tax rate. This is an existing sales tax that is currently going on. Early voting for both Dallas and Denton Counties begins Monday, October 24th, 2022, and goes through November 4th, 2022. For additional information, please visit capeltx.gov/election. Get a jump on your holiday shopping while helping those in need by stopping by the general store at the Capel Senior and Community Center. Find handcrafted jewelry, homemade goodies, and more. The store will be open 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, October 12th. And proceeds will benefit the Knit Wits Group, which supports the Love Thy Baby organization by donating knitted items to hospitals for babies. For more information, call 972-462-5136. And then mark your calendar for a petting farm, free snow cones, early Capel activities and demonstrations, and shopping at the Vintage Minyard Store at Capel's Pioneer Day on Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Heritage Park is located in Old Town Capel at 700 South Capel Road. Contact the Capel Historical Society for more information. And then join the Arts Council for the Arts Sip and Stroll on October 15th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event celebrates the installation of several new sculptures throughout Andy Brown Park East and will feature performances by the Capel Community Orchestra, the Ballet Ensemble of Texas, and the Capel Community Corral. The evening will conclude with an interactive demonstration by dueling pianos. This year's event offers VIP journal admission and a combination ticketing package that includes VIP admission to the Arts Sip and Stroll and the Capel Arts Center Foundation Gala, Gala on back-to-back weekends. Visit capelartscouncil.org for more information. Tickets are available for the Capel Farmers Market Farm-to-Table Dinner at 5:00 p.m. Saturday, October 22nd. This year's dinner will have an amazing lineup of food. Some items will be prepared by our local talented vendors and others by professional chefs. All ingredients will be sourced from the Capel Farmers Market. Proceeds benefit the market operations and supplement our nutrition assistance program. This is where customers receive a $10 per visit when shopping with the SNAP program. And then also on Saturday, October 22nd, beginning at 7:00 p.m., join us for a night of the Rat Pack-inspired glitz and glamour at the Capel Arts Center as we celebrate and support the art. Enjoy bites and sips, explore the center, experience live performances, bid on festive auction packages, and know that you support the inaugural Arts Gala. It's a foundation for an amazing program, cultural activities, events, and performances in the upcoming year. Tickets are $125 per person and are available at the capelartscenter.org. All right, item number 15. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that for those who might have been too busy and forgot about it, the Dallas County Election Department is holding a drive-through voter registration right now until midnight at the office at 1460 Round Table Drive in Dallas. So if you forgot, you still have time to register to vote for the November election.
And today is the last date to register for the election, to register to vote?
Right, till midnight, correct.
Till midnight tonight. Thank you. Item number 15 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Counsel, any public service? Item number 16 is necessary action from the executive session, which there was none. Therefore, being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 9:23.